Okay. We have green lights and we're ready for the record. Then, uh...
Hey, Bill.
We'll call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 7th, 2014 at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Roll call of board members, please.
Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Charles Ernst.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
Present.
Gene Castor.
I'm told he's on his way but running late.
Bill Prevotell.
Present.
Jason James.
Present.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
All right. Let's move to the approval of minutes of the November 5th, 2013, meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
All right. Mr. Ernst moves for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prevotell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Mr. Secretary. The minutes are signed.
Just retrieve.
All right, we have no communications. We have no continued public hearings. So, we go to item four, public hearings for tonight, PCO-1-14. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of North Miami, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use plan amendment to the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for an area of approximately 1.33 acres in size encompassing the properties located at 1094 Northwest 122nd Street, 1092 Northwest 122nd Street, 1080 Northwest 122nd Street, 1075 Northwest 121st Street, 1085 Northwest 121st Street, and 12105 Northwest 11th Avenue from low-density residential land use designation to utilities land use designation in order to allow for the proposed expansion and redevelopment of the Winston Water Treatment Plant, consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan, and further authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the subject Small-Scale Land Use Plan Amendment as required by Florida law, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. Tanya Wilson-Sujor with Community Planning and Development. Just to read the staff recommendation, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of proposed ordinance to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for the subject lots from low-density residential to utility land use, and for it to city council for final consideration. Just to provide some background information on the application itself, the subject site consisting of six adjacent and abutting lots totals 1.33 acres in size and includes properties with the following addresses: 1094 Northwest 122nd Street, 1092 Northwest 122nd Street, 1080 Northwest 122nd Street, 1075 Northwest 121st Street, 1085 Northwest 121st Street, and 12105 Northwest 11th Avenue. The subject area is adjacent to the city's Winston Water Treatment Plant, which is located just northwest of the subject area. Based on the current and future water demands, the city desires to expand the Winston Water Treatment Plant by adding new water storage tanks, as well as an additional administrative space to accommodate the current and future demands within the city's water service area. As such, all six properties were acquired by the city in order to provide additional land area for the aforementioned water plant expansion, and we've included a figure in your staff report which outlines the boundaries of the subject area. The city's Public Works Department has filed an application for a small-scale land use plan amendment, that's a map amendment, for a change in designation from low-density residential to utilities land use in order to establish appropriate land use on-site that's more compatible with the future intended purpose of the site. I just want to point out again that the applicant is actually our Public Works Department. Based on the analysis that staff has provided in the staff report, Article 3, Section 3-1105 of the city's LDR requires that certain criteria be met in order to recommend approval for any land use plan amendment. We've provided responses to that section in your staff report. Staff does believe that the criteria has been met, and as such, staff is recommending approval at this time, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, that the city engineer shall contact the city zoning administrator in order to submit a conditional use permit application with a detailed site plan with elevations for review and comments by the city's Development Review Committee. The final site plan and conditional use permit application shall be subject to approval by city council prior to obtaining the final building permits. The Public Works Department agrees to work with the city's contract architect in order to ensure the architectural renderings of the proposed structures on the subject site are aesthetically pleasing and compatible with the surrounding single-family neighborhood. And condition number three, that all six lots be consolidated into one parcel by virtue of a unity of title, said instrument meeting the approval of the Community Planning and Development Department and the office of the city attorney. Said instrument shall be recorded in the public records of Miami-Dade County with copies furnished to the Community Planning and Development Department within 45 days of final council approval. We do have the Public Works Director and Assistant Director here, and they wish to speak at this time to provide additional information on the item. Mr. Chair.
All right. Will you please come forward and...
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, the second item, which happens to be PC02-14, is quasi-judicial in nature because these two items are so closely intertwined, and oftentimes, the testimony in one spills to the other. I'd just prefer to place the...
That's fine. Place the witnesses under oath.
Witnesses under oath. Anyone desiring, or you have no option, so you're gonna... Will you be speaking, Mr. Pierre? No? You could take the oath if you don't... In the event you do have to speak, anyone desiring?
Always better to take the oath and be prepared in case we choose to call on you for some input.
And anyone else in the audience that desires to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand.
Even if you're undecided, you think you might be speaking, maybe not, it doesn't hurt to take the oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may proceed. As a point of order, I see that folks are still coming in. When you open it for public discussion, then at that point, if they're interested in speaking, I will place them on the road.
Administer the oath at that time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, sir, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Aleem Ghaney, Public Works Director. I've been before the board already presenting on this with the proposed expansion. Again, with the expansion, the Public Works Department has purchased these six properties with the intent of providing the required space for the additional tanks and also for an administrative building. The administrative building is also intended to be an emergency operational facility. Most of the water plants built are operational 24 hours per day and being staffed on a 24-hour basis. With this expansion, this proposed expansion, we plan on also making it a secondary EOC, which is going to be functional. As you know, City Hall serves as a regional EOC, and we will also be using that facility as an EOC together with the expansion, the proposed expansion. One of the requirements per... Our goal, actually, is to actively provide ADA requirements, staff parking, because you know, at the water plant, there's sensitive areas because we have hypochlorite, which is liquid chlorine. As it is right now, there's no provisions at this present water plant for staff parking away from all these hazardous materials that are stored on the site. So, apart from the expansion, there's also ADA compliance and regulatory compliance requirements that the city's Public Works Department is moving forward with, with the proposed expansion.
Well, that should keep the OSHA people happy.
That's true.
When you talk about an emergency EOC facility, could you go into a little more detail on how big this administrative facility will be, how many floors, whether it's going to have an emergency generator for power and so on and so forth?
Right. Presently, all water plants must carry backup generations or backup power supply systems. The existing plant has enough capacity with the proposed expansion to handle all emergency backup powers for the proposed expansion. Secondly, the facility that is being planned is going to be staffing approximately 15 people at the EOC at one time. Since the City of North Miami serves as a regional EOC, which is five smaller cities actually report to the City of North Miami, there will be spaces at that building to house the emergency satellite facilities as well. And when I say satellite facility, this facility would be designed in such a way that we'll be in constant communication with the Miami-Dade County Regional, you know, EOC, so we'll be in constant contact during any emergencies, whether it's hurricane or any other type of emergencies that may arise.
It strikes me, this is a significant upgrade from what we've had in the past.
That's correct.
Mr. Ernst, I believe you have a question.
Yes, sir. Will there be in the construction phase, or once the plans have been set forth, I know I may be jumping a little ahead, but what kind of impact will it have on the neighborhood once construction starts with regards to will there be pipes needing to be connected to the older plant, to the storage tanks, I guess, will be underground if I'm not mistaken, or will they be above-ground tanks?
The new tanks, or the proposed tanks, are going to be above-ground.
Above-ground tanks.
Yeah. The existing tanks are going to be demolished. The proposal is going to be... Both of them are going to be demolished because of the close proximity to each other and the spacing. One of the things that the consultants looked at was the actual buffer between the residential and the plant itself. The tanks are going to be approximately 35 feet, 34 to 35 feet in height. So, what we plan on doing is, along the residential side of the development or the expansion, we are proposing a 10-foot easement and large landscape buffer to buffer the impact between the actual plant itself and the residential community, together with a solid concrete wall. Based on our code, or the city's code, there's going to be a perimeter wall that is going to be approximately six feet high, you know, protecting the plant, because most of the plants is also security reasons why we have to do that, since it's a secure facility. So, all of these considerations went into the design and the proposal before you.
So, this will replace the plant that's existing across the street right now?
What it will do is to replace the two tanks, the two large tanks, and most of the control systems are going to be... The administrative building is proposed to remain on the present site, but the two storage tank and the future expansion for the RO is going to be on the additional facilities mentioned.
Do you have an open air filtration system there currently, correct?
Correct, yeah. Aeration system.
That stays there?
Yes. That is part of the lime softening treatment process, where aeration is the first part of the treatment.
Right. Now, again, will there be pipes going across that street that exists now that goes around that circle from the new plant to the old plant? Will there be a connection?
There will be connections, yes.
So, those roads will have to be redone?
The roads are actually... There's a plan with the vacation of Northeast 11th Avenue, and I believe that is why the city's planner has requested that the Public Works Department do a traffic, or traffic impact analysis, because that little area on the map...
Right.
The area between 11th Avenue and Northwest 121 Street, that area, we will be looking at vacating it as well.
Okay. So, that would come before us later on?
That will also come before you, yes.
All those details that you have just brought up will be before this commission. The site plan and also the conditional use permit requirements will be before you.
Before.
For approval, and then back to council for the subsequent two readings, so there'll be plenty of time to scrutinize all the details. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Ghaney or for Public Works? Anybody? Yes, Mr. Prevotell?
Mr. Prevotell. Is there a chance we have a proposed layout of all the equipment right now? Right now, we have a diagram of where it's going to be the overall parcel, but do we have a layout of where the new tanks will go and such?
We do have a layout of the tank, but I don't want to give you guys the final until we decide on the buffer and the landscape buffer, so I could bring it back before you if so required. But the tentative layout is for the two tanks to be on the new property that we purchased. The additional... The two tanks that you see right now are presently on-site.
Will come down.
A corrosion analysis was done on those tanks. Those tanks, from an engineering perspective, they have a lifespan of another four to five years. So, with the whole process of demolition and expansion, these two tanks will have to be replaced, and they're going to be relocated, replaced and relocated on the two, on the additional property acquired.
So, on the new parcel, the new, let's call it diamond-shaped parcel.
Correct.
What's planned, the first phase will be, there'll be two new tanks.
Two brand-new tanks.
With time, the two existing tanks and the other parcel will be removed, or actually, you may add something else. And you'll add two more tanks, so there'll be a total of four at this location?
No. What happens is the two new tanks are going to have additional capacity on the new location, and where the present tanks are, we are going to be locating the administrative facility for the water plant.
Okay. So, no tanks on the old square parcel?
That's correct.
Okay. Couple points. The configuration of the new parcel looks very much like it could accommodate a third tank for future use. Is that being planned out so that we don't compromise the space so that you could not get a potential upgrade?
Right. That is correct. Actually, the additional space on the site with the layout planned is to leave the space for an RO expansion. When I say an RO expansion, with the growth or the projected growth within the city, if in the future there is going to be the RO or the reverse osmosis expansion, there will be enough space to bring in skids or additional treatment facilities on the site. So, the plan, or the future planning on the site is also looked at.
Okay. I guess the point is, so we're not talking about some sort of a careless arrangement, lack of a better word, of the two tanks, but something that will plan ahead to allow for the expansion, whether it's skids or...
That's correct. We also looked into all of that. And one of the things that was, you know, and you brought up, you brought a very, very good point, because in other cities, this is one of the things that's happened, where lime softening is one form of treatment, and we're looking at reverse osmosis as the second form, which is most of the cities going towards. What happened is that there's going to be a blending facility, because when you have two different methods of water treatment, what happens is when you blend the water, then there's a... You change the chemistry, and a lot of these things have to be looked at. So, there's enough room for the proposed RO and blending facility when the time arises.
Okay. I guess the last point was, it looks like, as you've pointed out, the two existing tanks will be removed, and therefore, that square-shaped parcel will have mostly administrative billing and personnel on it.
Correct.
The... I don't really have a great understanding of operating water plants, but I would think that the water towers themselves, the tanks themselves, have occasional maintenance and access and usage, but probably not a great demand for personnel to go there constantly.
That's correct.
It's probably like 50 people going there, probably not. Probably it's a low amount. Is it necessary, then, to vacate the diagonal road that is in between the two parcels? Is it totally necessary to do that if there'll be a connection of piping below the street, which would require a temporary closure, and if the tanks do not require a lot of personnel to go there? And it probably doesn't look like there'll be parking, or it's the need for parking and other things in that location. If it's mostly for tanks and storage...
Correct.
Can we possibly create a buffer zone of landscaping and such, as you suggested?
Right.
Have a gateway possibly through the center part of where that diagonal street is, connecting the two parcels, just a gateway that could be occasionally used, so we wouldn't have to close down the street, and it could still facilitate that...
This traffic circulation.
Yeah, traffic circulation, and also sort of creates its own buffer, you know, by... It allows for a little bit of a buffer between the two parcels that would probably be landscaped.
You brought up a good point, because one of the things that the engineers looked at is, you know, keeping the storage on one side. But what happens, the reason why we have a 24-hour facility, and we all know with the heightened security after 9/11, on most of these water plants, you must be able to look at your complete perimeter at all times. There would be closed circuit cameras, there would be other security devices that would be installed in order for staff to monitor, because the whole idea is for somebody not being able to come on the site and contaminate the drinking water supply. So, what we could do, that's another option, you know, if you want to soften that buffer area, these are also options that we could look at.
Yeah, I mean, if the administrative building was towards that, off of that road, just to the south, just to the left and down of that, maybe it's tall enough to be able to look and survey over the area.
Right.
But just having an administrative building in the same precinct sort of...
In the vicinity.
Doesn't guarantee full security.
Right.
Anyway.
One of the other things, too, with the land acquisition is that the stormwater has not been taken into consideration, and with the stormwater treatment system required by Miami-Dade, well, required by the county, we got to treat for the first one inch. So, there's going to be some, you know, areas that are going to be used for stormwater treatment, water quality treatment on the site itself.
On the same, the diamond shape, the upper right, the new parcel?
The new parcel, that is.
On the new parcel.
Yes.
Okay. So, it seems like there's a good segregation of uses between the two.
Yeah.
And it seems like the level of security might be a little bit higher for the tanks than it is the administration building.
And one of the things, too, I want to mention is that the tanks, we're going to try as much as possible to blend it in with the community. I'm looking at concrete tanks with additional stucco buffers to make it, you know, aesthetically blending into the community. If you look at the tanks in Miramar and other cities, because I've been looking at other utilities, I want to make sure we put in, you know, features in there, aesthetic features that would just not make it look that a big chunk of concrete, or, you know, we want to blend it in with the surroundings, and even the color. We're looking at options with the color that we painted and all of that, so it would fit into the community.
Well, that all sounds very good. Just as we just sort of pointed out, the tanks are on one parcel and have one usage, the administration, the parking and such is another. If they are in fact two different sort of levels, if I may say, levels of security, one is a little bit higher security...
Correct.
Where the tanks are, more pronounced wall, more pronounced security. If you have to have wiring and then other indicators, you'd have that. If we did take out that road in between, it sort of requires that the entire, that both parcels would then mandate having this high security around both of them. Might it actually be our benefit to take the new parcel, have that the high security, have the gate through it, and not vacate the road? Therefore, we would not have the, sort of that prison effect going through the existing parcel?
The existing parcel. That's another option we can look at, too, in the final design.
It would be more neighborhood-friendly, possibly?
Yes.
And maybe, possibly even less costly?
We can look into that.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Any other members of the commission have any questions or comments?
On the, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may. Go ahead, sir.
We're talking about vacating the right-of-way on Northwest 11th Avenue. Is that the initial?
Yes. Northwest 11th. The diagonal portion from Northwest 11th, heading east to Northwest 121.
Okay. Okay. I got you. All right. Okay. Right, from here to here, yeah. Yeah.
That's not under discussion tonight, correct?
No, that's not under discussion.
All right. Thank you.
That's a future plan that may or may not happen.
Yeah, it's this portion here.
Yeah. You said from Northwest 11th, eastbound to 121.
Yeah, where they're labeling 111 to 121.
And that way, you would have a contiguous...
Contiguous parcel.
And if need be, you do it.
Let the record reflect, too, the photograph identifies 11th Avenue as 11th Street.
That's correct.
Small error there, but for the sake of clarification. All right.
I have a good question.
Yes.
I have a very quick question. What happened to all those nice big trees that are on the lots?
Well, we're looking at, I actually asked the parks department to see if we could...
Relocate them?
Relocate some of them.
All right.
We have the city arborists who looked at it. Some of them might be salvaged, and some of them, we might not be able to. But I'm looking at as much as possible to save most of the trees and relocate them.
Great.
There's also, if I may add, good news, there's a tree mitigation program, meaning that any trees that cannot be salvaged will be replaced elsewhere.
Based on the city's canopy code.
There's a formula, very complex formula, that determines by the width of the tree's trunk...
Right.
What type of tree has to be replaced.
Correct.
Aleem?
Thank you, Roland.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. E.
Is it 10th Avenue that... On 119th Street, is 11th Avenue the egress, or is that closed off and it's 10th Avenue?
You're coming through 10th Avenue.
10th Avenue, right?
Yes.
11 is closed.
11 is closed. That's correct.
I think it was 11th, so that, okay.
11 is closed, 10th Avenue is the egress-ingress.
We did several streets on 119th and on, yeah, when we did 17th.
Those are permitted street closures that we went through to Miami-Dade County, and that's correct.
And just real quick, 130, 21st Street is closed off of 12th Avenue, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you can't get to it from 12th Avenue?
No, you can't. You can get it from 10th, and you could get up to 17th, along 121.
But not up to... I thought it was closed off at 12th, on 121.
119th is closed off.
No.
But you can go all the way through to 17th.
Oh, okay.
Go south, south.
Yeah.
South, yeah.
All right.
Could I just share, if I may, just share a quick observation on the existing parcel, the square-shaped parcel? Right now, it's not a very pleasing element for that community, particularly if you look at as the streets that lead into that, as each of the four streets lead in toward that before they make their 45-degree turns, that all of them look at a tower or into the, an angle to the building and such, or into the other treatment areas. And it's sort of openly viewed from that axial approach, without compromising the entire lot and saying we have to landscape the entire amount. If a little bit more attention was given to, as those roads go into it, to that little point of the square, it's a big bang for the buck when landscaping. You would see that, and it would sort of distract you from looking at the greater tank.
Right. It gives you a buffer between the...
It would give you a buffer, yeah. It would be probably the most efficient way of making more pleasing to that general neighborhood by just taking each of those four corners and giving a little bit more emphasis to them.
Good observation, yep. Yeah. Landscaping.
These are issues that can certainly be developed as we go along, one of the, in concert with what you're suggesting there, Mr. Prevotell. I would ask the commission to consider one more, well, one more item here, which would be an item four when it comes to the recommendations, that we do in fact address the neighborhood landscaping and perhaps get a little outreach to the people that live right around that property and solicit their input on landscaping as this goes along. I realize this is probably going to be a multi-year effort. This is not going to spring up in six months.
No, it's not.
And the landscaping can be perhaps enhanced year over year, but I would like to see a recommendation that the immediate neighbors be given an opportunity to provide input on the landscape features as they are potentially designed and developed. Perhaps with some wisdom from the city council, there'll be a little extra funding to parks and rec over the next few years to dress up the existing property line. I do understand the need for security, and I think that's something that needs to be considered, but we can certainly make it look nicer as we go along. All right. Do we have any other questions for staff? All right, do we have any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none. We'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. If you step forward, you must give your name and residential address if you wish to have anything to say on this item.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We're not sure if you had me. It's going to be me.
Oh, we'll get you added in, not to worry. You won't be forgotten. Yes. Yes, good evening.
Excuse me, because I don't address you properly. Well, I'm Peruvian. I was born in Peru.
Just a moment. A moment.
Uh? Yes, my name is Lucila Muñoz. My husband.
Ms. Muñoz, can you please raise your right hand?
Oh, yes.
Thank you so much. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Thank you so much. Continue.
Yes. Well.
State your address, please.
I don't know, it's the first time that I come to, I'm living in North Miami almost thirty-five years. I have, my house is in 10th Avenue between 120 and 121st. My house is in the center and this house is in the corner and this house is not facing 10th Avenue but 121st Avenue. Okay. My house is sixty-six feet long and 100 feet, you know, deep.
Deep, yes.
Yeah. So the interest, the interest for ourselves is how is going to be my house? Are they going to destroy my house? Are you going to destroy the size of the house? I just spent $3,000 in fence because my house was low when I was visiting my.
What is your residential address?
It's 124 Northwest 10th Avenue.
Not going to be a factor.
Nothing?
No.
In the back either?
You're a block away, no ma'am.
Oh, sir.
Don't be a problem.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
I wish that everything is going to be all right.
It'll be fine.
Because the city is getting better all the time.
Thank you.
It's completely different when I move, but I like it because it's very quiet. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Eifert.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Last call, anyone wishing to speak to this? If not, public hearing is closed. Mr. Secretary, please let the minutes reflect that Gene Castor did arrive timely for the discussion on this item.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right, if there's no further items, then let's get a motion on this item.
Make a motion that we pass the item.
All right. Ken Uch has moved that we approve this.
Second.
Mr. Prevattel makes a second. Now, Ken, does this adopt the additional recommendation that we get citizen input from the immediate neighbors on landscaping?
I'll put that in there, that we get citizen input for the landscaping as the project is being designed.
And can I clarify something? Just to, in regards to planning, just to have the emphasis that if we have greater effort in the beginning to plan it out, it's very hard to come back later and say, we can improve it later on unless we have a plan in place. Doesn't mean we have to have the budget for plans and for this, that, but it's very hard to go ahead with something and say, we'll improve on it later, when in fact, oh, if we'd only known, we could have moved the building, we could have changed that driveway, we would have done this differently or that differently. As comprehensive as possible, we can make this plan, the easier it is, even though we may not have the full budget, to elaborate on it and to embellish it with the plantings and such.
I think we'll put in the cart before it was at this point.
Yeah, we're still the only.
I think let's keep it simple.
No, no, I was just commenting, the comment of making things better later on, it's really hard unless you have that.
Sure.
That vision in the beginning, so.
I have confidence that Public Works has that vision. Let's hope the city council can fund it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Thank you all for your intelligent and thought-provoking input. And let us now go to the next item.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order for clarification, there was a condition articulated before the vote was taken. Can you repeat that, that condition?
Yes, that the Public Works and Parks and Rec, whoever's involved in the landscape efforts, reach out to the neighbors immediately across the street, those adjacent to this expanded water treatment plant, and actively solicit their involvement in landscaping initiatives.
Mr. Chairman, let me, when we did the Arch Creek project, it was indicative of the Public Works Department and the Parks Department to reach out to the local community. They did that in the past and they did a pretty good job on Arch Creek and I'm pretty confident that you'll do the same thing again. I know what we're discussing right now, the additional trees around Emerald Lake and I, that's part of your standard operational procedure.
That's correct.
You do reach out to the community now.
And again, we don't want to put, place an impact on the residents and we understand that.
Yeah.
And we try our best to see we could create the landscape buffer, as we call it, so that it would sort of blend in. And again, we're dealing with something that we were dealt with. In the middle of a residential community, we saw it fit at the time to put a water treatment plant. So what I'm doing now is trying to put the pieces together and sort of make everything blend in from a planning perspective, from an engineering perspective.
Well, thank you. We understand and respect that. All right, let's move now to PCO-2-14. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations. By amending the City of North Miami official zoning map referenced in Article 1, Section 1-106, to reflect the rezoning of an area of approximately 1.33 acres in size encompassing the properties adjacent to the Winston Water Treatment Plant located at 1094 Northwest 122nd Street, 1092 Northwest 122nd Street, 1080 Northwest 122nd Street, 1075 Northwest 121st Street, 1085 Northwest 121st Street, and 12105 Northwest 11th Avenue from the current R2 residential zoning designation to PU planned use zoning designation in order to provide consistency with the land development regulations and to allow for the proposed expansion and redevelopment of the Winston Water Treatment Plant in accordance with the intent of the comprehensive plan of the city of North Miami, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and for an effective date, providing for severability, providing for codification, and an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to point out for the purpose of the public that this is the same identical site, therefore the background information is identical. What was decided on before was the land use change. What we're looking at right now is a rezoning to the actual zoning map for the city. So I'm not going to go through the actual background description as I did before. We understand it, it's the same property and the same overview, but I am going to read the recommendation into the record. It's, the recommendation from staff is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to rezone the subject site from R2 residential to PU planned use and forward to city council for final consideration. Based on the city's land development regulations, any zoning change, any zoning map change must be consistent with Article 3, Section 3 dash, that's 1003, we have a typo in the staff report, so that should be read 3 dash 1003 of the city's land development regulation. And based on staff's analysis, staff believes that.
That's 3 dash 1004.
3 dash 1004.
Yes, thank you.
There's a scrivener's error, we just want to correct that on the record. 3 dash 1004 of the city's land development regulations. And based on the criteria outlined in the zoning code, staff does believe that the zoning request does meet the requirements of the code and has satisfied the criteria and as such, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning for the site, subject to the following conditions, and I'll read the conditions into the record. The first is that the city engineer shall contact the city's zoning administrator in order to submit a condition use permit application with a detailed site plan and elevation for review and comments by the city's development review committee. The final site plan and condition use permit application shall be subject to approval by city council prior to obtaining final building permits. I want to point out for that condition, Mr. Chair, that you will see the condition use permit. I know Mr. Prevattel had requested to see an actual site plan, so the precise plan will be brought before you prior to going to council and also the condition use permit itself. So you'll see the detailed layout and landscaping and at that time you can add additional comments to that proposal that's brought before you. The second condition is that the Public Works Department agrees to work with the city's contract architect in order to ensure the architectural renderings of the proposed structure on the subject site are aesthetically pleasing and compatible with the surrounding single-family neighborhood. The third condition, that all six lots be consolidated into one parcel by virtue of unity of title, said instrument meeting the approval of the community planning and development department and the office of the city attorney. Said instrument shall be recorded in the public records of Miami Dade County with copies furnished to the community planning and development department within forty-five days of final council approval. As I said before, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning and the public works directors here if there are any additional comments you'd like to add at this time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional comments, Mr. Gane?
No, at this time, no, I think everything is covered previously.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak to this item are invited to step forward. Public hearing is open for the second call. And final call for the public hearing, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, it's time for staff recommendations here or a motion.
Make a motion that we pass.
All right, Mr. Eich moves for approval. Mr. Prevattel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very nice job. Thank you very much.
This is why I placed everyone under oath from the inception, because there would not have been anything on the record on the second item, so.
We well understand and we rely upon you for your considered, consideration and wisdom in this development. All right, now, our next planning commission meeting, do we have that yet or up in the air?
Mr. Chair, we have.
As yet.
Mr. Chairman?
But if not, it would roll to march.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we request the staff, can we go back and visit the parking garages maybe at our next meeting? I like to bring that up. I think we're getting to the point where we really got to address the issue, existing parking garages and future parking garages. You know, I don't want to be redundant. I go over to the beach, I go to Bay Harbor, I see beautiful, beautiful parking garages and I look at the nonsense that we have over here and it's disgraceful and I think it's time that we look at that. And also, just for a point of information, on Northwest Seventh Avenue off of I-95, I'm looking at this map and we can only go 55 feet? That's the land use? We can only go 55 feet?
That raises the next question. When do we begin the process of updating the LDRs?
All right, because that's.
Public LDRs at any time. That's a many.
Right, but there was a process where this was supposed to be reviewed every seven years, begin with the year report and go forward and we have the.
Comprehensive plan triggers that process. That's obviously set every seven years. The comprehensive plan will be instituted twice a year. So you'll start to see the special workshops on that at the end of this year. Once a comprehensive plan is adopted, then it will help us by statute to require to pay the.
And at that point, we get into issues of building heights and inclusion of garages and so on and so forth.
When can we do that?
Overall amendment, however, as Roland pointed out.
2015.
You could come in like the parking garages and recommend administrative text changes.
But for the.
For seven years.
But for the height, we can't, we can't talk about the height?
It's something that is already dictated, the height is dictated by the comp plan.
Okay, that's dictated, but, so if we wanted to say, I think it's absolutely preposterous that we can only go 55 feet on I-95. That to me is absolutely, we're going to, the city's in trouble financially, how we make our money and how we redevelop is going by height. I go down the city of Miami and I see beautiful high rises down there. I think it's time that we stop living in the past and look at this. We have a strip of land from 143rd to 119th Street that could be easily redeveloped, could be choice property. I could never understand when I was in the police department, why in the heck, everything was going down the brickle, why everything was going downtown and here we had this choice piece of land over there that could be utilized for gorgeous, gorgeous projects. When can we go on? This is, you said seven years out?
Well, Kenny, yeah, here's what happens, that by the end of 2014, we begin the review process that leads to the revision of our land development regulations.
Okay. The end of 2014?
Yeah, we begin getting into that.
Okay.
So, and I, I'm looking forward to that opportunity as well.
I am, yes.
I think a number of things could be tweaked to enhance future development, but we have to take this in process.
Those are the kind of amendments, well, those are the kinds of restrictions that are dictated by the comp plan, which would require a comp plan amendment. But, but at any time, yeah, that could be pretty much tackled at any time, the amendment. The comprehensive review is done every seven years.
I'm losing you on the amendment. Now, when you say an amendment, so if we wanted to change the height and we brought in a developer that said, let me, let me daydream, we bought the Wind Corporation in from Vegas and they said they want to build some beautiful properties on Northwest Seventh Avenue. Could we do that? Or we can't, we have to wait the seven years to amend it?
No, you don't. That could be done administratively, as we pointed out before.
I'm sorry, I'm.
That could be done.
Yeah, that could be done administratively, as we said before. Each of you are appointed by a council person. The conversation could start with your council person, if that district is the district you're interested in, that would be Councilwoman Steril, to initiate an administrative amendment to the comprehensive plan and also to the land development regulation. That's where you start that conversation. And the same thing with the parking garage, if there are recommendations for changes to that actual section, we could come here and discuss it informally, but in terms of making that actual change, you trigger it from the council level, they initiate the administrative application among staff, planning staff, and then we bring it back before you for discussion. Then it goes back to council for final adoption. So all you have here is a discussion, but to effectuate that change, it really needs to start as an administrative amendment.
It's, you know, I go down the gable, I don't mean to pontificate. I go down the gable, go to other cities and you see beautiful high rises and you see beautiful residential areas and one offshoots the other. And, you know, there's jobs to be created with these things and we have choice, choice property right there, I mean, choice land. And for the life of me, when I was in the police department, they used to say, we wanted to keep this a bedroom community. Well, it was a bedroom community, you used to find the homeless sleeping under the bridge on I-95 and 131st Street and it was absolutely preposterous, you know, they had the day labor over there and this is choice property, what are we doing?